Good morning, everyone, and thank you for taking time of your busy schedules to join CDW and HALO to learn more about the HALO vape sensor solution for Ontario K to 12 school districts. My name is Doug Feebig, and I'm an education strategist with CDW Canada. And before joining CDW, I spent thirty-three and a half years working in technology in the K to 12 sector, education sector, with the last eight and a half years serving as ICT manager in a small school district in eastern Ontario. I've also been involved in many initiatives throughout the province, including those created by Echna and OASBO. And my current role with CDW, and my role is helping serve customers by identifying and promoting new and innovative products or services that would be beneficial to the education sector. Before we start this webinar, I do have a couple of housekeeping items that I would like to address. First, please note that this webinar will be recorded, and the link shared for those who have registered. Second, we do want the session to be as interactive as possible, so please feel free to ask questions during the webinar, or post your questions in the chat, and we'll address them at the end of the session. The agenda for today's webinar will be as follows. We will start with some brief introductions of the team members involved in today's webinar. Following those introductions, we'll have an overview and a demo of the HALO vape sensor solution. We will then review the mastery-supported contracts and GPOs that are available to your district for leverage. There will be an opportunity following that for some additional Q and A, and finally, we'll wrap up the webinar. But before we get started, let's do a brief recap on why we are here today. Student vaping has reached unprecedented levels in Canadian schools, presenting a persistent and escalating challenge. Despite the Smoke Free Ontario Act, vaping amongst students continues to rise. Although perceived as less harmful than traditional cigarette smoking, vaping does pose significant health risks to our youth. In response to the escalating trend of vaping amongst students, Ontario has announced an increased allocation of funding to support an initiative aimed at prohibiting the use of e-cigarettes or vaping within school premises. This investment seeks to furnish schools with enhanced security measures encompassing the installation of security cameras, improved lighting, and the deployment of vape sensor solutions. So let's start off by introducing today's team members. First, from CDW, we have Julia Phat, Education Sales Manager, and Jessica Hine, Manager of Business Development. Joining the CDW team today are Malik Alain, who is the Client Account Manager with HALO, and Michael Davies, Director of Business Development. Both Michael and Malik will be presenting this afternoon, or this morning, their solution from HALO. And I'm going to pass this webinar over to Malik and Michael at this time. Gentlemen, can you please take away the presentation? Thank you.
Michael, you're on mute.
Great, thank you very much. So my name is Mike Davis, Director of Business Development for IP Video. IP Video is the manufacturer of the HALO product. So today, we'll be talking about HALO as a sensor, and how we address the vaping issue with this sensor, as well as some of the other things that HALO does. There are two versions of HALO. There's the HALO 3C, and there's also the HALO 3CP. And that PC stands for people counting. It has an additional sensor in there that it's able to do people counting, but both those are available, and we can talk about how the difference between those two devices here. Every HALO has four main categories of things that it does. Number one is it's going to capture data. We have a large number of sensors in this device. Every sensor is pulled every second. That information is pulled into an internal database. We're able then to run analytics, so we're able to run AI-based analytics, searching that data for patterns that would tell us some particular type of event has occurred. Then we're able to apply logic. We can have multiple different strings of logic and customize those events. And then we're able to report and notify in different ways and through different methods. So we'll kind of cover these four main things through the presentation, but it'll all really boil down to that: collecting data, analyzing data, applying some logic, and reporting. You can see what this device looks like. HALO, if you can see my image, I'll just show you from perspective size. So this is a HALO 3C. This is about the size of a typical smoke detector. It's typically going to be mounted on the ceiling, especially when we're looking at vaping detection, and is unobtrusive, and doesn't really bear any markings or anything identifying it what is as what it is. It's really meant to look fairly benign, like any other sensor that may be mounted. The company, IP Video, that we work for, we were purchased last year, last December, by Motorola Solutions. So Motorola has been purchasing a lot of best-in-class companies, and they're falling underneath the Motorola Video Security and Access Division. HALO is the device that they purchased as a smart sensor. So we manufacture the world's leading smart sensors. We're number one in our category, and that's why we were purchased by Motorola. So now we're a part of that overall Motorola organization, certainly adding a lot of resources and capabilities to our product manufacturing and development. We've been selling this device for about five and a half, coming on six years. It's the number-one-selling vape detector worldwide. It's certainly something you can research on your own, but you'll see HALOs have been sold in more schools than any other product. As a matter of fact, we have more than fifty percent of the world's market in total. All of our competitors combined is even less than what we're selling. All of our products, we do have different types of technology that we own. So we own a lot of patents on this. So some of the things that I'll talk about today might be unique to HALO, and they are more than likely patented technologies. I'll point out a few of them along the way, certainly not all of them. We do operate as an open API or open integration platform. So we want people to be able to integrate with us as a best-in-class product. We want to integrate with other best-in-class products. So we're open on integrations, and I think that's a key discussion topic, making it very easy to implement with existing technologies and existing systems that you may already have today. Those are some of the easiest ways for us to become a part of your normal day-to-day technology ecosystem. And then it is a "Made in the USA" product, so everything is manufactured in the US. We are NDAA compliant, UL listed, and ULC listed as well. The product itself, so just how it works, all these sensors, and you can see HALO 3C has fifteen, HALO 3CP with the extra sensor has sixteen sensors, constantly collecting information from all those sensors, pulling that into an internal database at the device level. We're doing our data collection and our data analytics on the device. So we're not sending that data off to a server or to a cloud or somewhere else to be processed. We're processing it there at the edge. It gives us a much greater cybersecurity, not transmitting data back and forth. Gives us much greater control over our algorithms and our data, and gives us a much faster response. So having that on-premises, on-device analytics gives us much faster response times. We do have the ability to do cloud processing, but we are taking that data up into the cloud, and then we're doing macro analytics in the cloud. And we'll talk a little bit about that, but that becomes very powerful as a system-wide solution. But the individual processing for individual device analytics is always done on the device level. Communications, a whole slew of ways we can communicate. And I'll start at the simple side. So at the device level, there's a speaker. We can play different notifications. You can record your own audio and play those upon different events, completely customizable. You can have those on or off, or even custom audio events. We have lighting. There's twelve LEDs on the back of this device. You have the ability to customize lighting reactions to different events. So we can have no reaction, or we can have a light blink, or change colors, or patterns. Again, completely customizable. We have a relay output, so we can physically wire our HALO to another system or another device. Lock a door, light a light, turn on digital signage. All of those things are possible through that relay switch on the back of the device. We can digitally integrate with a lot of other systems. So we can integrate with two other systems at the same time. Could be a video surveillance product, a mass notification, emergency management system, et cetera. But we could do two separate integrations at the same time, and we can send emails and convert those to text messages. We can also integrate with your building automation system, so Backnet, and we can send data through our HALO Cloud to an app. So that app would be something that could reside on a mobile device, either iOS or Android, and now you can get direct push notifications in that way, too. So lots of different ways to get notifications. We can kind of mix and match that to what makes particular sense for your application. Interfacing with the HALO. Whenever you're wiring HALO, there is a benefit here in that we do have an in and an out, meaning that we can use one cable run to the device and loop out to another HALO to save that PoE switch ports and to save that wiring configuration. But that is really for savings of money and time. But to interface with the HALO, you have a browser, so we can do a one-to-one interface from a browser to a HALO. We can do a one-to-many, so we have a free application called HALO Device Manager. Now, I can interface with all of my local HALOs and do updates and changes to programming and so on. And then we have our HALO Cloud, and our HALO Cloud gives you that ability to manage at an enterprise level. So any device, anywhere it's located, and anywhere you're located, we can view and manage and interact with all those different HALOs across that system. You'll see additional sensors here, and I'll talk more about that. But we're really focused on keeping this product being highly valuable to you over a long period of time. HALOs should last ten to twelve years. In that timeframe, lots of things are going to change. We're going to see vaping change. Vaping has changed many, many times in the last five years. We've had to upgrade our vaping algorithm many, many times. When you purchase HALO, you get free firmware updates for the life of the product. And with those firmware updates come new features, but also upgrades to existing features. And the upgrades to vaping is critical because vaping changes. The other reason why additional sensors is important is because vaping changes. And so maybe we have sensors that are capable of detecting today's vaping, but what happens if there's some new thing that we are not fathoming today that comes available next year or the year after? We still want to be able to catch those things. So as a hypothetical, if there was a new vape device that emitted ozone, and we didn't have an ozone sensor in HALO, but we wanted to add an ozone sensor, the ability for us to add external sensors to HALO means I could just add an ozone sensor to this device. It doesn't have to be completely replaced. The hardware I have in this device would still be viable. We could just add an inexpensive additional sensor or module to this device, either within the device or externally, wirelessly. And now we have the ability to maintain that value proposition that you bought the product for. HALO Cloud, we'll talk more about it, but enterprise management, longer-term storage, and lots of data analytics within that cloud platform. These are all the sensors that are in every single HALO 3C. So you see a whole bunch of environmental sensors: temperature and humidity, and air pressure, and light levels; air particulates in three sizes: one, two and a half, ten microns; gases: carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, ammonia at NH3; volatile organic compounds represented as a total; and nitrogen dioxide. All these different gases, two air quality indexes: the EPA standard for air quality and the CDC standard for air quality as it pertains to airborne virus spread. Then we have motion detection. Certainly, we want to know if somebody's in a space with motion detection. We also, if we had the 3CP, here we would see the occupancy in the room. So if there were five people in the room, we would see a count of five for an occupancy. And then an added panic button here, so we do have a number of additional sensors we can add. The panic button is one of them. Movement is how we tell if somebody is tampering with the device. So there's something in there called an accelerometer. Accelerometer, you have one in your smartphone. If you pick it up, or you move, change aspect, it's going to know it's moved in some way. The device that tells your phone, and the same device that tells HALO, is an accelerometer. This is how we know if somebody is tampering with the HALO. And two microphones, a high-gain and a low-gain microphone. Important to note here that we do analyze audio data, but we do not capture it, store it, or transmit it. So of critical importance for HALO is that we violate no privacy laws, no privacy rules whatsoever. The term we want to constantly avoid here is PII, Personally Identifiable Information. So if we don't capture any, we never will capture any data that could personally identify anybody. So that's the analytics only on the audio. These are the events, and this is a picture of the dashboard that could come with every HALO. These are all default events. So we see under Health are two air quality indexes. We see a bunch of other environmental standards. And I want to just pause there because some people will say, "Why do you have so many sensors in this device?" There's two reasons. More data gives us more ability to do two things. One is evaluate vaping. So now we know that this is vaping. Vaping has different components to it. We want to measure those components. We want to write the right pattern of data to occur to know that it is vaping. The other is to discriminate against things that are not vaping. As an example, somebody spraying their Axe Body Spray. We don't want Axe Body Spray to look like vaping. So the more data we have, the better we can identify vaping, and the better we can discriminate against things that are not vaping to keep those from false alarms. And of course, those sensors give us the ability to do other things, too. The air quality conversation and other health and safety aspects, too. Under Safety, we have Help or Spoken Keyword. So this gives us the ability to listen for keyword phrases that we can use to create an event. In this case, if we said one of our keyword phrases, that could call, that could create an event, and that may be used as duress, that would be one way of using it. And that could tell you that somebody had used that duress word to call for help. A good example of the Help spoken keyword and the Panic button, a lot of schools deploy this way. If there are students or groups of students who may be classified as at risk, or they're being bullied or something, we could give them a keyword phrase to use if they're in the restroom and they are needing help. They feel bullied, they feel threatened, they feel intimidated in some way. They can use that keyword phrase to call for help. Typically, we separate that from the Panic buttons. Panic buttons, we typically give to the staff who are responding to events. So if I'm a staff member and I get an alert and I'm responding, oftentimes, and we've got a lot of stories about this, there may be a health emergency. Somebody was vaping, and they had an event happen, and they were passed out, or they hurt themselves or something, but we need to respond medically. So what we could do is we press that Panic button. That lets somebody know, "I need help," but I can stay there with that person and address the issue on-site and know somebody's coming to help. So we, a lot of times, see schools using both the keyword and that Panic button. Emergency escape is just us coordinating lighting events. You could coordinate events in a lot of different ways where we're coordinating our audio and our lighting events based on certain activities. It could be exit path lighting, it could be all sorts of different potentials there. The occupancy. So that occupancy sensor, we have a built-in version, and then we also have an external version. But that's how we know that there's how many people are in a bathroom. And when we talk about logic, it's a good time to talk about logic because when we see an occupancy, we can now apply logic in a lot of different ways. I could say, for example, maybe I have a HALO in an administrator's office, and there should always be somebody there from eight to ten in the morning. So if there's less than one person, meaning there's nobody there, then I want somebody to be emailed, or somebody to be messaged and told that, "Hey, somebody should be at this area, and they're not there." It could be in a restroom, and we say, "You know, this is a restroom with only two stalls in it, but there's seven people in this restroom. We've exceeded a maximum threshold. Why are there so many people in this restroom? Maybe I want to know that." Or maybe it's a dwell time. Somebody's been in this restroom, but they've been in there for thirty minutes. Maybe that's too long, maybe somebody should check on them. Or what we call our overdose detection. Somebody's in there, I've seen them, they came in, we could hear them, we could, we have an indicator knowing that there's occupancy there, but then their movement stopped after a period of time. They completely stopped moving, and they've stopped moving for two minutes now. And we could voice down and say, "It appears that you may be incapacitated in some way. If you're okay, wave your arms. If you're not, somebody's going to respond and come and check and make sure you're okay." You know, so all sorts of things we could do with logic parameters, but that's all completely customizable. Gunshot detection, every major caliber of handgun and rifle. Aggression detection, yelling, screaming, fighting noises. Motion detection, we know somebody is present in the area, tampering with the device, and then vaping. And we're the only ones that when we say vaping, we mean every kind of vaping device sold on the market today. We include Delta Eights, Nines, Tens, the infused, the different flavored, every type of device, including, we're the only ones who are allowed to detect the heat-not-burn and the smokeless types of vape devices. So we detect all types of vaping. We can detect vaping that also includes THC. It's telling you separately that THC can be involved. And this is unique to HALO, vape masking. A lot of people will use the term masking, meaning that you have covered up the device. But here's our terminology. Vape masking means I have vaped, and then I sprayed something to try and cover it up. So how many times is a student vaping and then spraying their Right Guard Body Spray to cover that smell, or to cover or disguise that they were vaping? And that's very common. What it does from a sensor point of view is it hides or masks that chemical signature. So now the chemical signature looks different. It's not just vape. Now I've induced my Right Guard Body Spray into it. So we created another profile to look for that other event where I have vaping plus the aerosol spray together. So that's masking. And then we have smoking. So smoking, obviously, anything combusted, we would be able to tell you something's being smoked. These are external sensors that can be added to HALO. So right now, there are five of them. We will be releasing another thirty of these over the next year. So lots of different options for this. You could imagine external people counting, handheld panic, door, window opens, temperature, humidity, and water leak detection for those overflowing sinks and toilets and such. So lots of different things, and these are wireless add-ons to HALO. So think of HALO becoming more of a platform of products with the ability to add, and you can add up to thirty additional sensors externally to each HALO. So it gives you a lot of options with the platform and what the capabilities are in the future. I already kind of gave you a good example of using occupancy and applying the custom logic. So this is where we can apply custom logic to any event, any data set that we have, and create unique and custom events per your particular needs. These are integrations. This is just a sampling, but we have over eighty integrations. We integrate with lots of other systems, primarily security systems, your video surveillance and mass notification, emergency management, and so on. We can kind of take a look at what you guys might have and where we have potential integrations if you can get notifications and have user interfaces that are systems you're already used to using that really cuts down on time. When we talk about all of these different things, this is just to point out that we can do all of this together at the same time. It's not an either-or. There's some people who have limited capability of doing these things, but we can do our two integrations, our local notifications, integration with your building automation system, talking to our cloud and pushing notifications to our app, and adding additional devices. All of that can be done concurrently, so those are not either of those. Everything we've talked about up to this point is HALO as an individual device. No server, no cloud, no additional software, no additional licenses, just the HALO device. Now we can talk about if we want to add HALO Cloud. This is an optional cloud service. There is an annual fee for each HALO per year. We have discussed doing a free year of HALO Cloud for you guys. So this is something we can talk about. But this is what the HALO Cloud is really meant to do. We're able to capture data from all the individual HALOs and pull that up and aggregate it into the cloud. So we know we're doing our local event processing at the device level, but now up here at the HALO Cloud level, we're able to pull all that data up and run data analytics at a macro level. So imagine, you know, with a HALO device, all those sensors we talked about, all those events we talked about, we capture more than a million data points every day per device. All that's being ingested into the cloud, and we're storing it for a full year. Now we can do a lot of interesting things. We can look at hotspots, where all my activities happening, sort by filters and by events, my air quality aggregated, my health of my system and my devices. And the two most important ones for vaping are these two, heat mapping and trending. So heat mapping is the ability to sort by event type. In this case, we're sorted by vaping. And then a time duration, in this case, we've sorted by two weeks. So over the last two weeks, we're able to see where are most of my events by day of the week, and then by time of the day. Here's why that's important. When we start talking to you about implementation and your processes, and how you're going to go about affecting change, then the most important aspect here is consistent response. If you consistently respond, you will move that activity out of your restrooms, out of any place you have HALOs. They will just go somewhere else and hopefully off-school property. But that's the intention here. So what this gives us is the ability to know where most of my events are happening and prioritize and allocate resources accordingly. So I could say, Monday, you know, I've got three big times. I've got, you know, between nine and ten, ten and eleven, and one and two. And these are my big times on Monday, and it's these locations. And so now I know, these are where I'm going to focus and prioritize in getting response on those three areas at those times, and different on Tuesday and Wednesday and so on. When I do that, that success or failure is going to show up here on my trending graph. So now I'm able to see, okay, over the last eight weeks, here's what's happened to my vaping. You know, I started here, I had a great dip, and then I jumped back up. This was actually a vacation, but my vacation, nothing happened. And then came right back, and we started vaping again, but it's declined over time. So we're getting the response, we're getting the change that we want. If not, we know we need to adjust and refocus and change processes. We can also see here correlated events. Well, I'm correlated to vape masking, vaping with THC, no surprise, but we can now use that data, too. So these are two major ones. There's a lot more, and we can go in more depth if you guys want to. But there's a lot of ability to analyze and run reports and really look at all of that data in very unique ways. Obviously, also, I have most current events. I have devices, and I can sort by different ways to sort and look at the live data and so on. And all of that data is then available to you in the app, too, whether that's on a mobile phone or a tablet of some sort. But all that data would be there, as well as the real-time notifications. So this is all really starting to lead to that conversation about implementation, and we can have a discussion about that in the future. But just to let you know, we're very focused on being very responsive and supportive. During that process, we can help you with rollouts. We can make those go very smooth and painless. We can also help you with understanding what we've learned over the last five years from thousands of schools and where we have best practices for responses and policies and procedures and so on. So we always are happy to share all that with you to make sure you're having success. So I want to end in there, but there may be questions. We talked about a lot of information in a quick period of time. So if you guys have some questions, now would be the right time to address those with the problem. I'm going to pull up a live unit here. So this is a live unit behind me. I have HALO, and I also have a live version of the HALO Cloud. I'm going to pull up a live unit here. So this is a live unit behind me. I have Halo and I also have a live version of the Halo Cloud.
Thank you very much, Michael and Malik. Greatly appreciate the informative presentation and I'm sure everybody attending got some great information from the session. If there's any questions, please let us know. You can speak up or you can post them in the chat and we can take them from there. Not seeing anything at this time, but there will, there will be another opportunity for questions. So at this time, I'm going to pass it over to Jessica from CDW, who will review the ministry supported contracts and GPOs that are available for your district to leverage. Jessica?
Great. Thanks so much. Make sure everyone can hear me. Okay. Awesome. So thanks for handing it over, Doug. So as Doc mentioned, my name is Jessica Heim. I lead CDW's Public Sector Business Development Department. Essentially, my team exists so that you have that easy button when it comes to procurement with CDW. So my team looks after all the large scale vendor of record and GPO contracts. Essentially, we're responsible for RFP planning, RFP response, post award execution, adoption, growth and overall success of the agreement. So essentially, we're your subject matter experts. And I do have a dedicated resource on my team aligned to each of our top GPO contracts, which I'll go into a little bit later. Beside me here is Judy, who's our education sales manager. She leads a team around 14 sellers, both inside account managers and field sellers dedicated to the education market. As well, we do have a dedicated public sector and federal government team in the Ottawa region. Lastly here, I wanted to let you know about our strategic initiatives team. So this is an extension of our public sector sales team and works closely with our OEM partners, building strategic programs and partnerships to essentially better serve you, our education customers. So just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of a lay of land and let you know that there is basically an army of CDW folks here to support you. And we do have a strong focus on the broader public sector with many dedicated teams. So if you don't mind going to the next slide, perfect. So many of you may be aware and probably already leveraging a collaborative purchasing agreement or GPO contract with CDW or with another supplier. But as a refresher, or if this is new to you, I just wanted to make you aware of the main benefits. So essentially, a group purchasing organization, they go to RFP on your behalf. So they're completing that competitive solicitation process for you, saving you the time, the resources and the money from having to put out your own tender for every technology project. As you know, the RFP process is very pesky and we all prefer to avoid it if we can. So leveraging these pre-awarded contracts takes that burden off your shoulders while remaining compliant with the BPS procurement directives and essentially gets technology into action faster. So in cases like you're all in right now, receiving ministry funding, preparing for the September term, time might not be on your side. So leveraging a contract can truly help you out here. If you don't mind going to the next slide. So CW does have a number of awarded contracts available for you to leverage. Some of these logos may be familiar and you're already leveraging, or some may be a little bit newer, but we did want to provide you with the options you have. So to start, all three of these contracts, they're 100% voluntary. So there's no volume or spend commitments and there's no membership fees. You can essentially opt in to utilize them however you see fit, whether it just be for this Halo project or it's for more of your IT needs through CDW. So just a quick overview of these three contracts. So the first being Canoe Procurement Group of Canada. Canoe is a national group purchasing organization and they actually have partnerships with local municipal associations across Canada. So in Ontario, that would be AMO or LAS. So AMO being Association of Municipalities of Ontario. So the Canoe contracts, they are available for all public sector organizations, so municipal healthcare, education. But with their partnerships with these municipal associations, we do see more of the adoption coming from the municipal space. That being said, is still available to education. We do have education customers leveraging. So CW has been awarded Canoe supplier since about 2019. And we were recently re-awarded the contract for technology projects, products and services. So this contract includes all of Halo solutions as well as CW's full technology offering and all of our complementary services. So basically, if CW can provide a solution, it is available through the contract, which offers you flexibility, choice and implementing the technology best suited for your environment. Next is Kinetic GPO. Kinetic, similar to Canoe, is a national group purchasing organization and their contracts are also available to all public sector organizations, so municipal healthcare and education. It will say Kinetic is CW's largest contract and it is highly adopted in the Ontario market. CW has been awarded with Kinetic since 2017. And essentially, this contract also includes all of Halo solutions as well as CW's full technology and services offering. So similar to the Canoe contract, if CW can provide a solution, it would be available through the contract. So you'll never be pigeonholed into a one size fits all or SKU based list. You can essentially find the solution that's best for you and purchase it through this agreement. Lastly is our OECDM contract. So this might be a little bit more familiar for most of the organizations in the audience here. OECDM, again, a collaborative purchasing organization for broader public sector in Ontario only, but they do have a focus more on K to 12 education. CW, we are awarded a number of OECDM contracts. But OECDM has kind of taken a different route to market than what we see with Canoe and Kinetic. They award contracts for specific technology categories. So CW would have a contract for software, networking, end user computing, staffing, security assessments, et cetera. And so the relevant OECDM contract for the Halo solution or any vape detectors would be the end user computing agreement. So CW is awarded with a LoNovo, but it also includes Halo Solutions and other complementary EUC accessories and peripherals. So essentially, all of these organizations exist to serve broader public sector with the purpose of reducing procurement costs by leveraging the power of group buying. So Canoe, Kinetic, OECDM, they're all here to make your life easier. And in the end, it's saving you guys time by simplifying the steps to procure. So all of these contracts are available to you. And I just wanted to let you know that all of these can be used to procure your Halo solutions for this ministry funding and kind of speed up that procurement process and let you get the technology implemented into your organization faster. So that is all from me. I will hand it back over, I believe, to Doug to wrap us up.
Thank you, Jessica. Some excellent information for attendees looking to procure the Halo vape sensor solution for their districts, whether it be through Canoe, Kinetic GPO or through OECDM. Lots of options there for our attendees. At this point, we'll open the floor. Does anybody have any additional questions for either the Halo team or the CDW team?
Here's, oh, we've got a hand up.
Yeah, go ahead. Malik?
Yeah, I just to quickly introduce myself here. Hey, everyone. My name is Malik. I'm the client account manager as Doug and brought me up. I work alongside Mike Davis and I do also have my colleagues here. John, who's our regional manager based out of Montreal and our national sales manager, Ruben. I just want to kind of quickly show my face here, introduce also my other colleagues to let you guys know that we're also here for everybody's support. That's pretty much it on my end.
Excellent. Thanks, Malik. We do have another hand up. Kelvin, do you want to come off mute and ask your question?
Yeah, so a couple of quick questions. The first one is, well, I just want to say, yeah, thank you guys for putting this on. That's great. The the voice alert piece, folks, that that passes all the privacy piece, right? Like the M5P and all those piece. That's sort of my first question. My second question is, without the Halo Crowd optional piece, if you have multiple sensors in a school, does the principal still get a dashboard or how does that work? Maybe I missed that. I know people were coming in out of my office. So yeah, those were my two questions. Thanks.
Sure. So the, to answer the first question, absolutely, the audio does pass all privacy rules and regulations. In addition, at at extreme levels, if somebody wanted to just disable, we do enable, we do give you the ability to disable audio in total, but we have been challenged for for years about the privacy and Halo always passes all of those rules and regulations. We do not capture nor transmit any identifiable, personally identifiable information. Secondly, if you do not use Halo Cloud, you still have the ability to have visibility through integrations. Again, we would want to understand what systems you have today that we may have an integration with. So through integrations as well as through our free software called Halo Device Manager. And finally, we do have the ability to take that dashboard image that I was showing you and that can also be pushed as a video stream and ingested into other systems. You can watch that on a monitor. You can have that available as well as all the other integrations. So multiple different ways to still view and monitor and receive notifications from Halo with or without the cloud.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. So so just to clarify, if we don't have Halo Crowd, we install this in a school, the principal with some kind of app on the phone can still get alerts, right?
So if you want to use our app, we need the cloud. If you, if you want to use, so let's, maybe you can just tell me. Do you know what you use for a video surveillance platform?
Well, Morocco shop.
Okay, so so Morocco, we do have some Aruba and and a few others. You know, we could, we could look at Morocco's one that's closed. Unfortunately, they don't allow integrations, but we could look at, you know, mass notification systems, emergency management systems, et cetera. Always, we are typically able to find, you know, some sort of integration capability. So that would be the easiest way. If you don't have cloud, usually one of those other integrations does have an app that we can leverage. So we haven't found a timing we could.
Well, sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you for the questions, Kelvin, and thanks for addressing those. And like, any other additional questions? Not seeing any at this time. So first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for taking the time of your busy schedules for joining us today. If you do have any questions, you would like to see a quote or better understand what contract or GPO would be the right fit for your school district, please reach out to your dedicated CDW account manager. And if you, if you're not sure who that dedicated account manager is, please feel free to reach out directly to Judy or myself. Our contact information is currently on the screen. And if you want to leave your school board name in the chat as well, we can also get back to you with your CDW account manager's name. Thank you once again, everybody for joining us and we wish you all a safe and happy summer and enjoy your time. Take care. Thanks, everybody. Bye.